You know what else?
Okay, we're on.
We're on. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to a special call with Halden Knight. We have several members of the public on the call. We have all of our commissioners either on the call. And Commissioner Gamble is in the room along with staff. Well, I'm going to forego, if it's okay with you all, staff and the board identifying themselves on the call, and just kind of jump right into this call. Holliday Knight was engaged by the Board of Commissioners to assist us in better understanding what the criteria would be for receiving this money, the guidance from the federal government, which just came down, I believe, on the 24th, on how we could use this money. The $132 million that the county has received has a list of categories that are eligible for use of the reimbursement for building back up our communities and helping those in the greatest need within Cobb County. I emailed you, the board, a spreadsheet of the guidance and provided you all with some Q and A of the most frequently asked questions about that guidance. Before I turn it over to Holliday Knight, I just want to say that, one, I appreciate their guidance. They have provided us answers to a lot of our questions about the use of the funding. And the purpose of today's meeting is to allow the Board of Commissioners to ask any questions that they may have around the CARES Act and also to ask Holliday Knight to share with the board some future funding that may be available. Our homework assignment from Holliday Knight after we received the guidance was to take the list of eligible categories, share them with the board, and ask them to prioritize what areas do you feel are the most important, what's going to move the needle in helping your constituents, helping your businesses, helping your communities get back on their feet as a result of COVID-19. So they have the list. I have provided them kind of a summary of what's eligible within those categories. And so today, we are really going to focus on two things, the CARES Act and eligibility and the category. And then Holliday Knight will also share with us what kinds of things we need to be thinking about and planning for if there are additional funds made available by the President and Congress. So at this point, I will turn it over to Rich Gold with Holliday Knight, if you want to do a brief opening and talk a little bit about what you all do and the areas that you feel you can most help us. And then I'll turn it over to the board for Q and A. So Rich, I'm going to toss it to you.
Great, thank you so much, Jackie, and appreciate having the ability to appear before your board today and brief you all on the CARES Act implementation and the other legislation we see coming down the pathway here over the next six to eight weeks and how that county can best use the resources being provided to state and local governments with regard to COVID relief and eventually, hopefully stimulus and recovery. So with that, let me just start out by introducing myself. My name is Rich Gold. I'm head of the Public Policy Group at Holliday Knight. I've been working with local governments for 25 years on federal funding initiatives across the breadth and depth of your responsibilities, ranging from transportation to health and human services issues to environmental infrastructure and the like. I've got my colleagues, Shawna Watley and Jenny Busby, on the phone with me here today. And we are the day-to-day team working with you all on those issues with regard to CARES Act implementation right now. In addition, we have a team of about 15 other people who are substantive and subject matter experts in local government funding issues. And they have been assisting us and your staff in sorting through some of the questions that have come up with regard to CARES Act implementation, what you're allowed to spend the money on, what you need to do in sort of documenting expenditures, where there's flexibility in the funding, all those types of issues to make sure that you can be as responsive as possible to your constituents on the ground in the county and make sure you're optimizing your relief efforts for those most impacted, obviously. So I'm going to let Shawna and Jenny talk a little bit about what we've been doing so far to date, but let me start out just with a broader overview in terms of where we are and where we're going. Right now, obviously, we are sorting through the uses of the $132 million, making sure that you are spending those funds consistent with federal guidance, which is sometimes, as you might guess, not exactly clear in its black letter. So that means that we're going back to Treasury Department staff or Capitol Hill staff or other agencies to ask for clarification. And staff in the executive branch have been really heroic here. Obviously, a lot of these people are not in their office buildings right now, but they are doing everything they can to get proper answers out and be responsive in real time so this money can be used as quickly as possible. So that's been a big part of the function. In addition, there is discretionary funding program coming through that isn't just flowing through in the $132 million to you, that you guys will have the opportunity to make decisions on whether you apply for or not. And we're going to help you sort through those, decide what makes sense to apply for, you know, that you should access, and then obviously help you through the application process, making sure that we are working closely with agency staff for those grant programs to help prioritize the county's requests. As we just kind of have gone through the CARES Act, obviously, you've seen in the press over the last 10 days that the President signed what we are calling CARES Act 1.5, if you will, which is an additional increment of funding for the SBA loan program, as well as additional funding for national testing and a couple other odds and ends that the House and Senate came to agreement on late last week. What we expect to happen as that money flows through the system, of all the demand here in the system, the greatest demand is for the SBA funding. And we are expecting that the SBA funding Congress just provided last week is only going to last a couple of weeks, at best 10 to 14 days. And so that is going to put pressure on Congress to act again to continue to support small businesses. And that's just something that we need to be aware of. There are going to be a series of these bills as, you know, sort of the crisis continues that will provide additional funding for these programs. We expect the next one of those bills to be basically the CARES Act 2 bill, which will refund all of the programs in the CARES Act, probably add a couple things on top of that that have turned out to be holes in the system that weren't funded in the original CARES Act. And most importantly, from your all's perspective, provide the next increment of state and local relief funding, so sort of the next increment of your $132 million. Obviously, we don't know yet, but we will be advocating with Congress and with the Treasury Department to make sure that there's maximum flexibility for use of those funds. Obviously, from the county's perspective, being able to use those funds for lost revenue and not just COVID relief in response will be very helpful. So we'll be very focused with the delegation, with both your senators, obviously, and your members of Congress in getting that message out, making sure they're aware of that, and then working with other major urban counties around the country to drive that point home. We expect, following on CARES Act 2, which probably won't be completed until probably just before, you know, Memorial Day, if you will, so maybe between the middle of the month and Memorial Day for that to get done. But after that, we would expect the federal government to really pivot and start focusing on stimulating the economy as we start to see partial opening turn to more significant opening and hopefully some additional breakthroughs on the medical front such that it's time to stand the economy back up again. And what we expect in that next bill, which would probably be in the June, early July timeframe, would be a stimulus, traditional stimulus bill akin to the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act in 2009, which will provide things like infrastructure funding, tax credits to business to help them get, you know, stand up again and get back into business. For instance, there's talk about providing employers a tax credit again for restaurant lunches out for business entertainment, which was done away with in the 2017 tax bill. So those types of credits to stimulate consumer spending, which has obviously been significantly reduced, as we've seen in the economic data even this morning with unemployment numbers skyrocketing again. So we expect a pretty major stimulus bill that will provide opportunities to the county in areas like transportation and infrastructure projects, environment, clean water, drinking water projects, economic development projects, and the like, because we can kind of go through in more detail. But with that, let me just stop there before I hand off to Shawna and see if any members of the board have questions about sort of that overall picture of CARES Act, CARES Act 2, and the stimulus slash economic recovery bill.
Thank you, Rich. The commissioners have any questions? Okay, Rich, you can proceed.
Okay, Shawna, do you want to kind of take it from there?
Sure. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. You know, since Holliday Knight has come on board to work with the county, it's been our primary objective to make sure that whatever direct funding, formula funding, or competitive funding that has been available through the last three pieces of legislation that the Congress has passed and the President has signed related to the coronavirus, that you all are made aware of it. We send out, if not daily, weekly notifications of the grant opportunities and guidance. And we want to make sure that you have full understanding of what the eligibility requirements are so that the county is not missing any opportunities as it relates to the coronavirus You know, Rich has done an excellent job of really covering those different aspects and the provisions. We know that there's particular provisions within the pieces of legislation that are important to you all, such as HUD funding, FEMA, HHS, Justice, FTA and transportation, as well as economic development. As we move forward and watching what's happening with the next piece of legislation and the stimulus packages that folks are considering, we want to make sure that the delegation is made aware of your priorities. I have been in contact with Congresswoman McBeth's office to let them know that we are working with you all, and they were excited to hear that and want to make sure that, you know, we keep them abreast of whatever your priorities are currently and in the future. Jenny, I don't know if there's anything that I've missed or Rich has missed that you might want to speak to, but, you know, we're open to any questions that you may have.
Sure. I'm just going to go back to our last call for just a quick second. We talked about homelessness funding and the county serving as a pass-through. And we found out that that is allowed under the guidance. So basically, ESG and CDVG funding can already be used for nonprofits, but other expenses related to COVID are eligible. And we also discussed some public health reimbursement questions, and I actually am going to share a document with you all later today that kind of shows what's eligible under FEMA for reimbursement and what's eligible under other pots of money through the CARES Act. And I think everything else was covered.
Thanks so much, Jenny. Jackie, I would just conclude our formal remarks by saying, we're really here to help your board and obviously county staff maximize the use of the federal funding coming from the CARES Act, the next CARES Act, CARES Act 2, and any stimulus funding, and obviously help you compete for competitive grants that you apply for, both of working directly with federal agencies to advocate for and advance your proposals, as well as working with the delegation to keep them educated and make sure they're weighing in at appropriate times. So we look forward to continuing to working with you in that space and obviously are here to answer any questions, you know, now and as things move forward.
Thank you, thank you, Rich. Again, I will open it up to the board for any questions or comments that you have of Holliday Knight.
Let me go by commissioners. Time to Commissioner Burrow.
I'd like to see an accounting from us as to what we have spent so far with each department from PPE equipment, technology. I know we're all on VPN, and we've got a lot of expenditures that we've already made. And I'd like to kind of see what departments they're coming out of and what amount they are, to know where we are with the $132 and where we're going for the future.
Okay. Good question. I met with Bill Boltman this morning, Commissioner Burrow, and he and Kathy are already putting that together for your review. Every day, within the daily report, staff is asked to upload that information in their reports on anything that they may have purchased, any emergency purchases that I have signed off on under County Managers Authority, all of that is already in spreadsheets. So I'll be happy to share that with you and the board. Bill, do you think it'll be ready today or tomorrow?
We can have draft today.
We can have a draft for you today, and we'll have it broken out by technology and exactly what the technology components consist of, the PPEs to include masks and sanitizers, and we'll break it all down for you so you'll know, and what categories it falls under within the guidance that's provided, okay?
Okay. I have a couple other questions, too, if you want me to continue or...
Just one second. Bill wants to add to...
Commissioner, we actually just met before this meeting, and we're going to have this updated every Friday. It's going to be due to me from all the different departments. And then what we propose is getting it to the commissioner and the county managers the Wednesday of the following week. So what I have that I'll send to Jackie today will be a draft of what I currently show or what I currently have received, but we're vetting that through all departments to make sure we're not missing anything. We know there's a couple things that we still haven't received yet. So I just want to let you know, whatever we sent to you today will be continually to be updated every week, and my goal is to have it to the management team and the Board of Commissioners by the Wednesday of the following week.
Okay.
Thank you.
And is there any way to project future expenses, like reorders of masks or PPE or through all this?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to provide you with that as well. I sent you a document prior to the meeting that had on here, like, return to work preparedness items, and one of them was, has to do with things we want to have prepared and stored. So if by chance, and we hope not, but if it comes back in the fall, we will have supplies already on hand and stored and ready to distribute should we need them. And so that will be one of the areas where we will allocate part of that $132 million as a line item to say, this is what we would ask the board to approve for just those things.
Okay. Is there a category for parks? Is that under the arts or humanities or what? Because, you know, with all the barricades and fencing that we put up...
Yes, ma'am.
Where, how are we going to cover all that cost?
That's, all of that is under the homeland security piece that falls under disaster relief, and there are a lot of different categories in there, so expenditures that you've incurred as a result of COVID-19 that you didn't anticipate or did not budget for. So we will add all those things under there. Under libraries, it does fall under the arts, but any supplies, anything that we expended to get Jim R. Miller Park ready, for example, for testing, right? Any of the thermometers, the Texas thermometers that we're going to be purchasing, all of that is going to fall under what Kathy has been logging and keeping up with as part of our county expenditures.
Right. But that's part of the testing. What about our parks that we closed and the barricades, the fencing that we had to put up? Is that covered under here?
Yes, ma'am. Anything that we have incurred as a cost, as a direct correlation to COVID, we can...
I just didn't see a category is why I'm asking, to make sure it's covered.
We're going to make sure that it's covered in an appropriate category. So we are... Yeah, that's all under the homeland category. It's very broad, as Rich mentioned. These categories are very broad, and it covers those types of expenses that we incurred that we would not have budgeted for. But we could talk a little bit more about those specific things offline.
Okay.
Once we pull all that together, we'll give it to you and share with you what all that costs and how we have categorized it following the guidance.
Okay. Yeah, I think once we see the list that Bill's talking about with what we've spent so far and where it's come, where, you know, which department, medical examiner, and we've got a lot of, a lot out there. I think that will help us prioritize and figure out, you know, how we're going to apply the money.
There's also a category of funding for arts and recreation that may cover specifically what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you. I'm looking for some guidance with respect to this $132 million cash infusion versus the grants that we can apply for under the different categories that are listed here in this document. We've had some discussion about expending funds with respect to food security, and there's also been discussion around even housing stability. And my thoughts are that the $132 million can also go towards small businesses, as an example.
Commissioner Cupid, the guidance that we shared with you, and you have this spreadsheet handout that I emailed to you guys, those are the broad categories. And then I also sent you all this morning, like, breaking those categories down. So Rich and the team asked us as staff to send to you guys all of those and then have you all prioritize what you want to focus on. So they are not telling the board what you all can choose as your priorities. You can decide that you want to fund or uplift the community by saying, we want to support small businesses at this amount, and here's the category that, you know, or the amount that we want to allocate per line. So, for example, we want to allocate X in a line item for small businesses, X in a line item for emergency food and shelter, X amount of money in a line for county expenditures and preparedness and return to work. The board can decide those categories and the amounts that you want to allot for that. The one thing that you have to remember is that it is reimbursable. So whatever we put out there, for example, we said we want to give, I don't know, $20 million to small businesses, we have to come up with the guidance and guidelines that you want to approve in order to, right, make it available for those small businesses to apply for those funds.
Yes. And so my question with respect to that is, we have a very extensive spreadsheet. Is that providing guidance for the $132 million and beyond with respect to other grant programs that we're applying for, or is this specific to the $132 million solely?
So, Rich, and you can jump in here on this, but we understand is this, that I've shared with you, is CARES Act 1, for lack of a better way of saying it, only, right? This is your $132 million, the board's $132 million, right here, just if we were dancing right in this lane, how do you want to allocate this $132 million using these categories?
Okay.
The funding that transit has already received is not part of your $132, right? The funding that the airport has already received is not part of this $132, that's above and beyond.
Okay. Commissioner Cupid, go ahead. Do you have a follow-on question?
No, go ahead, because I'm still trying to get some clarification. I'm looking at these categories, and I'm sorry, I don't know if this is Richard speaking, but I've heard discussion about us applying for monies within categories, and then I also know we have this large bucket that is before us. And I'm trying to understand with the spreadsheet that we've received, which category, which funding source does this apply to? Does this apply towards our $132 million? Does this apply towards everything under the CARES Act? Can you help me with that?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure which spreadsheet you have in front of you right now is my only problem. Jenny, do you have a sense of what they're looking at?
So I created the spreadsheet, Rich, to make it easier for the board to visualize and see the categories. You know, the guidance that came out on the 24th, it was more than a Word document, right?
Got it.
So what I asked my assistant to do is to take that and put it in a spreadsheet to say, under the USDA, here's what it allows for, just cut and paste it and dropped it into a spreadsheet, and then put a sign to a staff member, one of us who would be responsible for making sure that whatever funds are available, it fits within that category. And if there's a business partner that we need to partner with, we assigned a name to that, just so that I, county manager, wouldn't be responsible for managing all of these categories. So Commissioner Cupid, they don't have the category sheet, they have a Word document. That's all the board has, you know, they have a Word document.
Okay, so, okay, so using that framework in mind, with the Word document that we've received from Holliday Knight, is that providing guidance to us with respect to the $132 million? Or is that providing guidance to us with respect to another source of funds?
No, it's only the $132 million. We do not know what the follow-on programs are going to look like yet. We're only talking about $132 million today, Commissioner.
Okay. And so we can apply that to all of the individual categories that were listed in that document.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That helps me better understand what flexibility we have. That helps me better understand what flexibility we have. Are there any, are there any best practices that you could point us to that have been utilized by other jurisdictions with respect to particularly the small business infusion, the SBA line item here for businesses of 500 or less employees?
Yeah. Commissioner, unfortunately, the term best practices probably does not fit too well with the SBA program. Of all the programs we're struggling with right now, that is probably the most difficult program because as I said, it's got the greatest, it's got the greatest demand.
Right.
I will take this opportunity to say, we are having, you know, kind of regular email interaction, which your staff is a part of, with other cities and counties around the country and sort of sharing experiences. So we, Holland and Knight do have a forum that is sort of providing a helpful place for governmental officials to talk about those issues. But with regard to the small business program, Congress is really trying to make sure they pump as much money into it as possible. What they did in CARES Act 1.5, the bill the President signed late last week, was to loosen the strings a little bit and make sure more community banks were getting that funding and not just sort of the big banks, so that smaller businesses and the like would be able to get access to those funds. But the main problem with that program really is the demand for the program, even now vastly outshifts the amount of money that Congress has provided. And that's why we expect continued kind of quick movement on providing additional funding for it.
Okay. Yes, it would be helpful to get as much guidance, even if we were to learn what other local jurisdictions are doing...
You bet.
...to assist others. Because I've heard, you know, whether watch, you know, watching the news or listening to other Zoom meetings, that other jurisdictions are already opening that pot of funds for small businesses. And, you know, my concern is similar to what you've identified, it's just the amount of demand that may be out there and how do you pick and choose those that should receive funding and then to what amount?
So part of, yeah, part of the issue on that is just that, you know, obviously each small business has to apply through its bank or a bank, you know, for the relief funding. So there really is a limited role for the county, you know, in that process. It is mainly sort of education and sort of public pointing folks in the right direction, a role for you all to play. It's not you applying for them directly.
Thank you, and I appreciate that because I've, I've read different articles about some local governments actually having a source of funds, whether or not they're supporting those that are in their town center or some areas. And I just, I wanted to get some guidance. And from what I'm hearing from you, that our role would simply be to educating small businesses and then directing them to where they can apply for funding or what they can do to best apply for funding.
This is Shawna, I did want to add to what Rich had said, there are some local governments are developing their own funds for small businesses, so that is an option for you all, but that would be something that you all would have to develop and determine what the guidance would be.
And would that be with funds beyond the 132 million or could the 132 million be utilized for that activity?
So I know the cities that I've been working with are using funds that they have put to the side for such programs. I would need to look at the guidance closer to make sure that the funds that you all have received would be used, be able to be eligible for that.
Okay.
Get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Changing categories and moving towards housing stabilization, this was something that came up briefly during our business meeting and it's been an ongoing topic with the nonprofits that I've been speaking to over the past few weeks. And I'm trying to, again, see if there's suggestions, guidance on the expenditure of those funds because we've, we've heard of demand for rentals, stabilization, then mortgage support, which is listed here in this document, to even assisting people with, you know, emergency, staying in a hotel room or perhaps extended stay. And I think, you know, that's certainly a great category of need within our community, but I just don't know how we begin to approach it with the funds that we have. If there's guidance on whether or not it should just go towards emergency, like hotel, immediate hotel and extended stay for shorter duration, should we be looking at more, you know, mortgage support or, or rent? And if we do use the 132 million for that, what does that look like for a timeframe? I mean, we don't know how long this is, you know, pandemic is going to be with us. So something that we look at, you know, retrospectively, something that we look at, you know, putting aside funds for the next month or two? I don't know.
Hey, this is Jenny. Unfortunately, in the CARES Act, not enough funding really went towards rental assistance or housing. Chairwoman Maxine Waters has said this is a priority for her to be in the next package. I know that you have gotten some funds through CDBG and ESG that can go towards that, but, you know, all housing groups are saying it's not even close enough. So it's really, it's, the guidance is really loose, so it's really up to the county to decide like how much you want to be putting towards these programs, but also knowing that Congress is working towards securing more funds and rental assistance and mortgage moratoriums are being voted as, like, at least from the Democratic side, priorities for the next package.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the immediate questions that I have, thank you.
Detective Fisher-Rott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to thank Jackie and her staff and all the prep work they've done with Holland and Knight to get us kind of the information that we had coming into today. I think some of the stuff that Commissioner Cupid was bringing up about the small business, I know looking at the stuff that the county manager sent us, it does appear that there may be some ways, because I mean, let's talk about the reason that we have some of the homeless issues, the reason we have some of the food issues, it's because people don't have their jobs. So to me, money that we can put towards getting these small businesses back up and running, getting these people back working and making an income, I think will go a long way in helping deal with some of these food issues and housing issues. So to me, I think that for Holland and Knight, that would be a high priority on my, my list is to see what exactly are we allowed to do with these small businesses? Because clearly, the federal program, it doesn't have enough money and it's probably never going to have enough money. I mean, they've already, they're on the round two and talking about round three and round four. So I think that, you know, with Cobb being bigger than five states, I think there is an opportunity if the CARES Act allows some of that 132 million to go towards the small businesses to try to get county residents back to work. Because that's, that's what they want to do, that's what we need them to do for the economy and Cobb to survive all of this, we've got to get people back to working in their jobs. I'm totally supportive of the four categories that the county manager sent us in the email just before the meeting. I think that, as you all know, one of my high priorities is not just preparing potentially for the fall if we have a recurrence, but just building up a strategic stockpile for the county. And I know that Kathy has been doing a great job over in EMA, working on trying to, you know, get the resources that she can with the difficulty that it is in getting them. But I think that that's an important part too, that a significant portion or the amount that we need to go towards resupplying or creating that stockpile that the county may need in the fall or just down the road. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. But I like the idea that, you know, the county manager is, you know, kind of in charge and spearheading it all. She's divided it out to the different agencies and departments that have kind of direct influence on that and I, and I think that's a good direction to go. That's about it.
Hey, Commissioner, Commissioner Gamble.
Again, thank you Jackie for coordinating this. I support Commissioner Otte saying I think we need to focus on small businesses and, you know, helping get people back to work, being self-sufficient. And then my only other question was, when are we going to have administer these funds? Because it sounds like if we're going to do grants and stuff, we need to look at how that's going to be handled or maybe doing that. Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else on the staff have a question? Okay, I think we're good.
All righty. Any other comments before we end the call?
Jackie, this is Shawna, I just, as I was looking over the provisions, it does say on, in the guidance for number five, it says expenses associated with the provision of economic support. And then it says expenditures related to the provision of grants to small businesses. So it looks like the money is eligible for that, can be used for grants for small businesses. But we want to make sure that we're reading this correctly, so we will check in with Department of Treasury just to make sure and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. And we are in communication with the chamber and others who are so concerned about small businesses, commissioners, and I had already asked them to put together a proposal and white paper to bring forward to you based on the needs that they're hearing out there and the categories that they think can move the needle, things that can make a difference for your consideration. So they're already working on that and so as soon as we can get that from them, I'll bring it back to you for consideration, okay? So we will keep you posted. Thank you everybody for being a part of the call and we wish you well, stay safe and we will be in touch very soon. God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.